I'd like to thank you for coming here tonight. We have a robust crowd, and I like that. We normally sit here and look at each other. But we're going to call to order the meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission for August 27th. And we'll start out with a call to order and roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beginning with John DeVoe.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Pat Heisler.
Here.
Marty Probst.
Here.
Peter Scanlon.
Here.
Steve Stannard.
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, Charles Schrader and Jerry Penland are absent.
If you'd all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Let me introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all had a chance to look at the minutes of the August 13th meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll start this off with the reading of the request and/or public hearing. Before we do that, let me give you a little bit of how we normally do this. We'll start this off with the staff giving their presentation of what this, what the request is. At that point, the applicant will then come up, do the same thing. At that point, the commission here will ask questions of both the applicant and the staff. At that point in time, we'll look for public comments if you've signed up to speak tonight. We'll try to limit those to five minutes, and if it's a duplication, somebody already covered it. So we don't stay here the wee hours. I'd suggest that you let us know that. Then we'll have some rebuttal from the applicant if we need to. Then we'll have a discussion, and then we'll continue on for voting on that. That's kind of the procedure we run every meeting. And with that, we'll read that. PUD 15-01, Best Western Hotel at Gold Hill Square South. Request for approval of a PUD Plan Unit Development, Business Development Amendment, and established dimensional standards for the Gold Hill Square South. PUD for constructing a five-story hotel approximately 63,000 square feet, including eighty guest rooms, a parking garage lobby, breakfast room, indoor pool, and support services. The proposed project is located at 703-717-719 Gold Hill Place with a legal description of lots two and three, pages subdivision, and lot eight, block 27, Highland Edition. The applicant is William L. Page of Page Properties Corporation, PO Box 9012, PO drawer 9012, Gold Hill Place, Woodland Park, Colorado. This is Riley, it's yours.
Thank you very much, Chairman DeVoe. I'm Sally Riley. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Woodland Park and have been working this case for the last month and will be doing my presentation first. And Mr. DeVoe did do a quick overview of what the hearing proceedings will entail. There are about ten steps associated. It will be the staff presentation, the applicant's presentation. Commissioners can ask questions of the staff and the applicant. We'll open the public comment to allow for anyone in the audience to be able to speak. We would like for it to be new information or opinions. We'll close the public comment, and then the applicant will have rebuttal. The Planning Commission will then continue to ask questions or go into deliberation, and the chair will encourage a motion, and a second, and a vote will be taken. So we want to make sure that all of you have an opportunity to speak if you would like to this evening, and that is the steps with which a quasi-judicial public hearing takes place. This is very similar to a court and a jury and a juror. So we will begin with a brief description. The request is from an applicant, Mr. William L. Page of Page Properties Corporation. This area that we're speaking about tonight is outlined in red on the zoning map. It's a planned unit development, PUD. And whenever there is a change to that PUD, that is a change in the general character or the land use, it requires an amendment to the PUD, and the Planning Commission is the group that holds the public hearing on that amendment. This case also needs to set dimensional standards. Now, those are setbacks, heights, frontage, those sorts of things, because when this PUD was established, the shopping center was already built out, and there were no dimensional standards established. So that is the legislation that requires this action this evening, and I am going to actually begin with what the staff's recommendation is. That we are going to recommend, or the staff, to the Planning Commission that they continue this public hearing, and that we're recommending that the applicant redesign the structure by reducing the height, creating a more attractive roof design, and a 360-degree facade to a more acceptable scale, and add architectural enhancements based upon the findings and the evidence that I will be presenting and that you will be hearing this evening. So, we, staff does not agree to a five-story hotel. The applicant has agreed to extend the public hearing to October 22nd. And I will go over the details of our findings so that you will all be well-informed. First of all, we would like to give you some background on this PUD. The shopping center was constructed from 1978 through 1999. There were additions made to City Market in 1998, and Gold Hill Wines was added in 2002. It was originally developed under the zoning of C1 District. But then in 1996, the city rezoned this property to what was known as Service Commercial Zoning District. This was when the city overhauled our entire town and established a new nomenclature for all our zoning categories. When it was zoned Service Commercial, it did not meet some of the setback standards. So as a result, a year later, the city council passed an ordinance to rezone this property, PUD. And planned unit development does not come with any particular setbacks, heights, or other dimensional standards. They are established through a process of establishing a final development plan. Because this shopping center was already built out for the most part, we accepted, or the city accepted, the ALTA survey that described the existing facilities. This proposal tonight changes the footprint, the heights, and the character of that PUD. So as a result, the amendment to the PUD is required to be processed. So that's the background. Here's an aerial of the Gold Hill South Shopping Center, the northern portion, and the proposed hotel is outlined in yellow. You can see that the existing rooftop is slightly smaller, so this footprint is going to be slightly larger than the existing footprint. And this portion of the shopping center is known as Building Six. You can see the surrounding uses, office, the Loaf and Jug to the north, the church property to the east, Wendy's to the south, and more retail inline shops to the south as well. The blue lines are lot lines. And you can also see its proximity to Highway 24, Gold Hill Place, and then a portion of Lorraine Avenue also extends into this area. So that gives you a little bit about what is being proposed. The total footprint of the proposed hotel will also, will encumber the area that Woodland Hardware occupied, about 11,000 square feet, where the Sherwin-Williams store is currently located, and where Goodwill is currently located. The shops on the southern side of Building Number Six will remain should this proposal move forward to development. This is the portion of the ALTA survey that shows the build-out of the shopping center. And in yellow is the footprint and the area with which the proposed shopping center is housed. You can also see on this diagram the parking and the surrounding improvements that will service this area. Right now, access from Highway 24 can be from three different points. Gold Hill Place, where the existing traffic light is with Highway 67, and then through the Loaf and Jug. Mr. Page has two access easements that allow for vehicles to traverse from the north. There is also a 30-foot drive that's behind the building that ties in all the way behind City Market. The renderings that were submitted show the elevations for each side of the building. And I'm going to start with the north elevation. This would be the elevation that would be directly behind the Loaf and Jug, and on the bottom level, this is where the Woodland Hardware used to reside. The applicant is proposing to have a parking garage in that area, and I'll show you the floor plans for each of these levels. And you can see the story above the parking garage is where the Sherwin-Williams and the Goodwill currently resides. The new portion of the building is shown as three stories above the existing structure. That's the north elevation. And then on the very flip side of that is the south elevation that shows the existing building and then the stories above. The two towers on each side are the stair towers. They are needed for access. There's also, of course, an elevator that would take guests from the garage up to the various levels. The west elevation is what will face the highway toward the intersection at 67. So you can see that the west elevation is going to be the main entrance to the site on the second level, and then the rooms above. The east elevation would generally face the Catholic Church, and this is the entrance to the parking garage and the exit to the park, from the parking garage and the hotel above. So that gives you a general idea of what was proposed for the elevations and renderings. Now, the floor plans, this is the 32 parking spaces proposed in the garage, the lowest level. And to orient yourselves, north is actually over to the left here, and this area in the back is the easement that abuts the Catholic Church. So the entrance to the parking garage is from the east, and the 32 parking spaces lay out very nicely in this bottom level, and there is ample room for also trash collection will take place in here, as well as the elevator and the stair towers. The windows to the parking garage will remain, so it will look very much like a storefront. The next level is the second main entrance with a portico share. This will allow vehicles to drive under and enter into the lobby area. There will be support services, a breakfast room, a swimming pool, a small swimming pool, and then there are 14 rooms that are proposed on the second level. Then the primary tower portion are the three levels with 22 rooms each. Mr. Page had proposed a total of 80 rooms. With the staff's recommendation to reduce the height, it is expected that those rooms will drop maybe to about 60 rooms. But we won't know that until the redesign takes place. So those are the floor plans. Also asked the applicant to provide us a perspective from the highway so that we could really see what a five-story hotel would look like in Woodland Park. And obviously, we felt this was not in character, in harmony with the town, and this photo was taken from the Elm Street, Gold Hill North, and the Shamrock Gas Station. You can see the existing building and how it is sunk down into a lower level, and then the three stories above with the roof line. This perspective gave us a very good idea of how it would impact the skyline of Woodland Park. The next perspective is coming down the highway, going eastbound toward the intersection at Gold Hill Place, and Mr. Page sketched in the hotel on the north end of Building Six. So you can see the roof line in the distance here. That's the Woodland Professional Building. It's approximately 40 feet tall at the West Street intersection. So you can see that that was significantly taller and we felt was not appropriate for Woodland Park. So when we evaluate the application for a PUD amendment, there are a number of criteria that we look at. First of all, does it meet the purpose of a PUD? And this does. A PUD provides greater flexibility, more latitude of the design, the proposed heights, setbacks, street frontages, and lot coverage. The redevelopment from retail to lodging with a parking garage does provide for greater variety of uses in the shopping center. We do believe that it complements the other businesses within the shopping center, because if guests are staying at the Gold Hill South area, there's opportunities not only for shopping but for restaurants and entertainment in a short walk distance for these guests. So it fits the purpose of a PUD. Then there is a section that's called Final Plan Requirements, and you must meet all these Final Plan requirements in order to approve a PUD amendment. The first one is quite lengthy. It talks about the acceptable planning practices and that it's a health and safety are protected, traffic, access, privacy, and so on. It, I believe, only partially complies with the subsection A of acceptable planning practices. The staff believes it is not acceptable primarily because of the height, mass, and bulk, and that the architecture is not incompatible or in harmony with the expectations of Woodland Park. We have had quite a few changes over the years, and since the design standards were put in place for Woodland Park, we have been able to get a more mountain western flavor, and that's evident of even Walmart, or the recent Starbucks, or other projects in town. So we do believe, however, that it is an acceptable land use. It will be built very well, so to protect health and safety. I'll talk about the traffic study and the reduction of traffic as a result of replacing the existing retail with lodging. It does provide for convenience, and there are windows in all of these rooms, so there's plenty of light and ventilation. It conserves the values of the properties around it rather than having vacant buildings, and it will protect against fire and other hazards. So partial compliance here to subsection A. B1 asks about the location and size. We've reviewed this as a 1.39 acre tract, and there are common areas, easements, and ample parking. Subsection B2 talks about the surrounding properties. This is a very mixed-use area which a lodging facility fits in very nicely to with the convenience store, the fueling station, the fast foods, the other retail shops, a place of worship in the heart or downtown area of Woodland Park. So it fits nicely within the surrounding uses. B3 talks about density of residential. That's not applicable to this PUD since it is all commercial. B4 is the dedication of parks, schools, or public buildings. That also is not applicable because it is not residential, which is what drives the need for parks, schools, and public buildings. B5 is the location of streets and easements adequate. As discussed, the primary entrance at the traffic signal is Gold Hill Place. That's a 50-foot wide public right-of-way, which is quite adequate. And then Lorraine Avenue is kind of a remnant parcel of Lorraine out of the 1890s when this area was originally platted as part of the Highland Edition, way before the highway came through. Actually was part when the railroad came through, and the railroad went right back through here behind this building. So there are adequate rights of ways. The easements are already existing for the public facilities, and then the easement that I mentioned that provides access from the north through Loaf and Jug. So those are all adequate. The subsection B6, which talks about use, bulk, and location of accessory buildings proposed, does not comply, in staff's opinion. We believe the height, which is measured at mean grade at 58 feet, is too tall. And if I can explain what mean grade is, this building has an entrance on the second level, so that grade is up higher than the garage entrance, and you have to average those two grades to get that 58 feet up to the top of the roof, the peak of the roof. The 75-foot from garage floor to the peak of the stair tower is also excessive. The building dimensions, the building is approximately 160 feet wide, long, and 70 feet wide, so it's a very large building. Therefore, its mass, height, and bulk of this five-story building would significantly change the character of Gold Hill South Shopping Center, which staff cannot support at this time. That is why we are recommending that the building be redesigned to reduce the height, mass, and scale, and create a more attractive roof design, and add architectural enhancements such as rock or wood timbers. Right now, the architecture is stucco with the windows, and we need more types of materials on the building for greater enhancements. Subsection B7 asks about covenants, and there is a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the shopping center that was recorded in 1988. The construction schedule is slated to start in the spring of 2016, and then move into the fall after Sherwin-Williams and Goodwill are vacated their space with completion in the following year of 2017. The feasibility for the disposal of sanitary waste and stormwater runoff complies. There is an existing sanitary sewer tap to an eight-inch sewer main located adjacent to this building. The stormwater runoff is piped from the building into a 30-inch CMP storm pipe. That's a corrugated metal pipe that is conveyed into the Fountain Creek system. I'm sure you're all familiar with the channel that runs by the Catholic Church and then daylights out in Woodland Station. That is the headwaters of Fountain Creek. And also, I wanted to mention that there is an existing six-inch water main north of the building, and then there's also an eight-inch water main. These are all looped adequately to provide for fire flow, adequate fire pressure. This building will be sprinkled and designed to the fire requirements in the building code. B10 asks about a parking plan. The parking for this type of use complies. Our city standard is that there must be one space for each bedroom, plus one space for every two employees on a maximum shift. Therefore, if 80 rooms were proposed, there would need to be 86 required spaces. The applicant is providing 32 of those spaces in the parking garage, 48 spaces surrounding the parking lot of the hotel, and then, for a total of 80 spaces. And then there is an employee parking lot kind of behind City Market but towards the hotel, the proposed hotel, that there's ample space for employees. Six employees can park there. And when Gold Hill South Square was master-planned originally, it was, the parking was established on a mixed-use concept in that certain businesses have peak hours or peak times when vehicles are coming in. And that's what makes a hotel nice, is that you get your peak hours of traffic later in the evening when the shops have mostly closed, and early in the morning, the visitors are leaving, the guests are leaving, so it makes room for those who are shopping. So this- So this is what we call a balanced mixed-use concept for parking. Subsection B11 is the landscaping plan. Although there's minimal landscaping in this specific area of the 1.3 acres, most of the landscaping is along the, um, roadways and creates a nice entry feature. There are pockets of landscaping. The applicant is going to provide one new landscaped island near the front entrance. They're also going to have potted flowers under the porticoche, and, uh, the major landscaping, although it's only 2% on this site, we feel it is adequate. B12 is whether there is a legal subdivision, and I apologize for this hard-to-read copy of an old Blue Line because this was subdivided in 1979. This is the best copy we have of this. Here is Gold Hill Place. There are two lots that comprise the hotel site and a portion of the old, um, Highland Edition Lot 8. But it is on a legal subdivision which meets the requirement. Now, subsection B13, this is whenever you have a commercial PUD, there are sections A through I that need to be addressed. So the first one is dealing with the traffic, and a trip generation letter was prepared by LSC. They are traffic consultants, and they have reported a significant reduction in average daily trips. Currently, if all the retail space were filled, 22,000 square feet, that would generate 990, almost 1,000, average daily trips in and out of the shopping center based on the ITE. That's the Inter, um, Institute of Traffic Engineers, and they have standards that apply how many square feet, how many average trips, and the study is in your packet. This was done when we were first looking at a 70-room pro, hotel, and its projected average daily trips would be 509. So that would be a reduction of 481. CDOT also reviewed the trip generation, and they concluded that the analysis was acceptable and no improvements were needed to Highway 24. Subsection 13B asks about location of fencing, berms, and retaining walls. There will be no changes with the existing site for fencing or retaining walls. Item C is a description of signage. The applicant has proposed both wall signs, as shown on this building, and he is proposing a freestanding sign with an electronic message display adjacent to the highway. The PUD standards are, for signs, are governed under our Sign Chapter or Ordinance, 1848. They are reviewed and approved administratively, and a separate sign permit and application will be handled with this process. With respect to lighting, 13D, no modification is proposed to the existing lighting. Currently, the shopping center has 30-foot-tall downcast pole lights that are 40, 400 watts, high-pressure sodium lamps, so they're kind of the, um, yellowish color. They're not that bright white or blue color. The hotel will have recessed LED lighting in the roof overhangs, and any new exterior light fixtures shall comply with Woodland Park's municipal code to prevent glare with full cutoffs or shields that will prevent the bulb from being exposed. And we will review the lighting with the construction drawings. Subsection B13E is the location of outside storage areas. There are no outside storage areas proposed. In fact, the solid waste or trash will be stored inside the parking garage, which will have tra, uh, access to that. 13F is employment, asking for the employment projections. Proposed at this time are three full-time hotel employees and five part-time cleaning staffs. The cost-benefit analysis is the per, um, estimate of over $73,000 per year in hotel room taxes, uh, $27,000 in building materials or use tax, and then there will be an increase in property tax with this improvement. However, this property is within the Downtown Development Authority, and the DDA has preliminarily reviewed an agreement to rebate a portion of that, um, property tax. And Mr. Page can elaborate on how these numbers were calculated if you have questions about that. Subsection B13H is a statement that needs to be on the final plan. It basically says that the, um, development shall conform to our performance standards as set forth in 1833. So that's lin, that's, uh, the lighting and, um, various use regulations, and that will be added to the final site plan. Item I is any additional reasonable information, uh, shall be provided. So at this time, the staff is requesting that the applicant redesign the building by reducing the height, mass, and scale, create a more attractive roof design, and add architectural enhancements. Along with all of the PUD standards, then, we also have the dimensional standards. The proposal for the site coverage is 31%. The building footprint divided, um, by the, uh, whole area, almost 60,000 square feet, the building footprint is over 18,000 square feet, means that the site coverage by the building is 31%. The maximum impervious surface is 98% because you back out the 2% of landscaping. The maximum height, which is unacceptable at this time, was proposed at 58 feet, measured at mean grade. The lot frontage, we have a number of frontages. First, Highway 24, there's 85 feet of lot frontage there. There's 120 feet adjacent to hold, Gold Hill Place. There's also the 30-foot utility easement and 20 fe, 200 feet adjacent to Lorraine Avenue. Typically, a lot has a minimum of 40 feet of frontage. Building six setbacks. The setback of the north elevation to Lorraine is at 6 feet. The setback from the rear of the property is 30 feet, and a zero setback for a side. That's because these, um, uses and buildings are oftentimes side by side. So a zero side setback is perfectly acceptable, and in fact, that is acceptable in the Central Business District. Central Business District setbacks are 10 feet on the front with projections that can go into that 10 feet, uh, zero side and zero rear. When this, uh, master plan was done in the 1980s, the setbacks were established at 10 feet on the front and zero on the sides. There was no rear setback set. So we're proposing, staff is, um, agreeable to the six-foot front off of Lorraine primarily because the Lorraine Street, you wouldn't even know it was a street. It functions internally between the, um, convenience store and the hotel. 30 feet from the rear, because of the existing easement, you cannot build in easements, and then the side lot line is perfectly acceptable at zero. Um, in addition to the PUD standards, we also evaluate a PUD because it's permitted conditionally with the conditional use standards, and there are 11 of conditional use standards. The first one, uh, is broad and general. It talks about a need and whether the mitigate, the impacts have been mitigated. Staff believes that only partial compliance exists. It does comply with a need. There's only 96 rooms, hotel rooms, in Woodland Park right now, and we would very much like to see more hotel rooms to accommodate visitors and tourists in the area. And currently, between the Country Lodge Eagle Fire, those rooms are occupied at a high percentage in the summertime. According to the Chamber, they run about an 80 to 85% occupancy. Throughout the entire year, they have a 60% occupancy, which is good for a hotel. So more rooms in the area would be great. However, we do not believe that all the impacts have been addressed, which I've spoken of, the height, mass, scale, the obstruction of views have not been mitigated with this proposal. Criteria number two is protecting public health and welfare. It will comply because it must meet the 2009 International Codes as well as the 2003 International Fire Codes. Property values at this point does not comply because we believe the five-story hotel will devalue the vicinity properties due to the height and the impacts to the views. Harmony does not comply. Uh, it is not consistent with our character in Woodland Park. Conforming to a city plan, that's our comprehensive plan, partially conforms because it does, the land use does provide for economic diversity and strengthens our downtown, but it does not preserve the community and environmental quality or enhance Woodland Park's small-town atmosphere. Conforming to city regulations at this point doesn't comply due to the excessive height, mass, and bulk, and accommodate on and off traffic does comply due to the reduction of the number of average daily trips, and CDOT can accommodate this use along Highway 24 and 67. Drainage complies because the existing system functions well, and there is no new impervious surface being proposed, so there will not be any increase in runoff. We have adequate water, wastewater, solid waste, and air quality. Uh, any safety hazards, we believe, will be addressed by complying to the building codes. The architectural design, however, at this point does not comply. So therefore, again, the staff recommends that the planning commission, after you have had your public, your questions, the applicant's presentation, public comment, and you feel comfortable to move forward, that we recommend, the staff recommends that you continue this public hearing to October 22nd, recommending that the applicant redesign the structure by reducing the height, uh, create a more attractive roof design, and, um, address 360-degree facade and adding architectural enhancements based upon the findings in the staff report. And these findings, uh, based on the evidence and the testimony tonight, you can see, do not meet, um, the sections A and B6, and then the conditional use criteria, numbers 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 11, and therefore, the planning commission will not transmit the proposed development plan to City Council until these criteria have been met. Now we would like to turn it over to the applicant. Thank you for listening patiently to the long presentation, and we will ask the applicant, uh, to come up.
My name is William Page, Gobel Bill, and I've owned this property since 1969. And, um, the, um, I wanted to say that Sally went through her staff report with me about a week ago, and, um, and I to, I told Sally I was not offended. So, you know, the, and I look forward to going through this process with Sally on coming up with a, uh, a redesign or whatever design we come up with. And, uh, but the fir, uh, well, I'd like to break from that in a minute. I'd like to introduce some people. I have Doug Page here at my table, Lisa Harrison, my daughter, and Perry Harrison, my son-in-law. Then I have Jeff Johnson from Goodwill in the back, um, back row there, center, center. And I asked him to come because, um, we had a, um, I've worked off and on with Goodwill for about four years trying to get them more space in that building. And after Woodland Hardware moved out, we did a couple of plans and made, uh, cost estimates and everything, and, and, uh, the, uh, Goodwill is occupying 6,700 square foot right now, and Woodland Hardware, uh, left 11,782 square foot. And, but anyhow, Jeff called me back in May and said, "Bill, we wanna, Lori and I want to come up and talk with you." So they came up, this is, I think, about the 13th of May or so, and, uh, and when they came in, they said, "You know, um, we've been here 20 years and so on, we had a good relationship, and, but we've come to the decision, we need to move. We've just outgrown the space, you can't accommodate us," and so on. So that's what triggered me moving forward with the hotel project. And, uh, so I'm gonna put some boards out here on these, um, chairs, and I'm gonna do a different kind of presentation. I'm not high-tech where I can do it on the screen and so on. I do a point and, and, um, walk around and wave my arms and stuff, so if you excuse me a minute.
I was wondering why those books are here. It answers the mystery.
and wave my arms and stuff. So, if you excuse me a minute. Is it on now? It's on? The, I designed this building in, I designed this building in nineteen eighty-five. And the building was constructed in nineteen eighty-six. And the, I'd always, I'd owned that property for, like, sixteen years at that time. And I'd always been fascinated by the possibility of a hotel somewhere in Gold Hill South around the intersection of twenty-fourth and sixty-seven because of the traffic, the view, and the, just the overall mix of activities. You know, a mixed-use project with lodging and dining facilities and retail and all kinds of stuff. And so, when I designed the building, I laid it out on a steel-framed structural grid, twenty-four feet, seven and a half inches on center each way. That's where the columns go down and tie into the foundations on the earth. And that structural grid works with enclosed parking, like the parking garage concept I've used for the hardware store was. And the, it also works for retail use. We used this building for retail very successfully from nineteen eighty-six through two thousand fourteen, March of two thousand fourteen, when the hardware store moved out. And, but that structural grid also works for hotel rooms. Hotel rooms are typically twelve-foot wide inside. So, and we had made provisions on the roof structure on top of where columns come up for other columns to go on up other stories. And so, I wanted to talk about that flexibility and the, figure out where I can stand here where I don't get in front of somebody. So, the, on this photograph here, this is where the hotel location is at, where the rooms, the other floors go up. And here's a port casera and where vehicles can unload. And we have a new stair tire on the west end, and we're using an existing stair tire on the east end. One thing that I'd like to point out is that a hotel guest, if, I'm going to go the smaller plan right here, but the, well, I'll come back over here. You've got a guest that comes from out of town. They can get their dry cleaning done, you know, about a hundred fifty feet away. There's a Wendy's restaurant, there's Fusion Japan, there's AJ's Pizzeria, we've got a coffee shop, and there's some gift shops along here, there's hairstyling places. And so, there's a lot of convenience for the hotel guests, different things they can do, the, if they, you know, buy things at City Market before they take off on a picnic or something, where they can do that. And so, I wanted to point out that the, that kind of activity, this hotel will bring some people to Woodland Park that will stay in Woodland Park that aren't staying here right now. And it's, when the Best Western people came here and looked at it, they got all excited. And the, but I'm going to back up a little bit. I was looking out my window last January in a snowstorm, and I saw my yellow sign over there that says, "Space available." And I'd had about two phone calls in, in ten months about anybody inquiring about eleven thousand square feet of retail space. I'm wondering what I'm going to do, you know? I've got a sixty thousand dollar a year of property tax bill. So, I decided to give a professional opinion about my hotel plan. I had done a sketch plan and, for years, and sketch plans, history plans here. So, I commissioned a hotel hospitality marketing firm. And they're a national firm. They have offices worldwide, Hong Kong, London, Canada, Mexico. And they're highly recognized in the hospitality industry. It's really knowing what they can, they're experts. They can tell you where they're not, you're making a mistake, or maybe there's an opportunity. And so, I commissioned a report back in February. And we got a draft on it along in late March. And lo and behold, right on the front page of that draft, it said, "Propose Best Western Hotel." And, wow. You know, I'm just an old country boy from Oklahoma. I don't know anything about figuring out hotels and so on. But the, anyhow, I read this report and gave it to my family members. We all read it and read it. And so, and then about six weeks later, I get this call from Jeff Johnson at Goodwill. They want to meet and so on, and they want to move forward their plans. And Jeff talked about, maybe we could work together and make this work for both of us, you know? And so, after the Goodwill meeting, I requested the marketing people complete their report in a final format. And I received that on June third. And the, there's a copy of the, the date of the report I received it. And so, then I called the hotel marketing expert at HVS. I said, "How do you get in touch with Best Western people?" So, he gave me a phone number of the Western Regional Manager for Best Western Hotels in Canada and the United States. And so, I called that guy. His office is in Phoenix. Told him a little bit about our project. And he said, "Well, I'd like to come look at it." So, he came the next week. And he got here, I think, is about seventeenth of June. And so, we had lunch, and I took him through the parking garage area, and I showed him our plans. The only plans I had was, these are my eleven-by-seventeen plans that I developed. They're sketch plans. And, you know, this is the parking garage down below that shows the parking vehicles, or cars coming in like this elevator right here. There's an entry from our hardware store entry. And then this is the lobby level right here with swimming pool, breakfast area, meeting rooms, fitness area, and then hotel rooms, and then typical floors above. Now, when I ordered the, that's what I ordered the marketing study from. That was sixty rooms, four floors. And so, when Bob was here, he's the guy from Phoenix, Best Western guy, took him out on my deck at Gold Hill North, straight up above where Carmen, I got to get up with some water, excuse After I showed Bob the floor plans and so on, I said, "I want to show you the view off my deck." And it's where my office floor is, right across from Carmen Restaurant and two floors above the movie theater entry. I said, "This is the kind of view I have from these hotel rooms. What do you think if I added some other rooms up on top that were special rooms, you know, that had maybe some outside decks and, and very unusual rooms to capture that view?" And he said, "Well, I think you really ought to try it." He was just, he's from Phoenix, Arizona, and he ended up on the later that afternoon in Lyman, Colorado. And he's standing here looking at Pike's Peak and all that stuff. And he said, "Well, I think you ought to take a look at adding another floor," and or adding some rooms. So, that's how I moved from sixty rooms to taking a look how we could add some other floors. My market study report is for sixty rooms. And so, and then he, that night, he sent me an email from Lyman, Colorado, eleven-twenty at night, about what he, that his thoughts were. And he was pretty turned on, you know, to have a hotel in a small town with interior parking, you know, and snow and stuff like that. And so, then he had his corporate office, while he was out traveling, send us some documents that showed design guidelines. And they, there's a white book over there about that thick. It's got design guidelines in it. And so, we got all this stuff from Best Western. And so, we sent an application back right after the Fourth of July, and to see if we could become a part of Best Western. And so, after they accepted our application, they sent us some AutoCAD drawings that showed some examples of, of the hotel rooms. And they identified the market here that wasn't being taken care of as upper-mid-scale. And they identified the hotels that provide rooms in an upper-mid-scale as Holiday Inn Express, the Hampton Inn, the Hyatt down in the Springs. And I really didn't, had never heard that term before. But the, but that's the market that they thought that wasn't being taken care of here in Woodland Park. And so, anyhow, I, I've been having some meetings with Sally and David and Butterie and Brian Flair and Bill Ospick about this. And Sally informed me about six weeks ago, "Well, we're going to have to mend your PUD to, to make this comply." So, and in that process, along about three weeks ago, "The building, we want to see your elevations." Well, I said, "I don't have a floor plan yet. And I don't know what Best Western will approve." You know, I've got a set of guidelines over there that thick in that white book over on the corner of the table. So, I'm thinking that, whoa, this is a chicken-and-egg thing. Which comes first? And so, anyhow, I took a shot at doing an elevation, or elevations for this presentation. And it's this drawing right here. And before I did that drawing, I went around and looked at some Best Western hotels in the area. Looked at one and, up in Castle Rock, and looked at one in Colorado Springs. This is in Castle Rock. And this hotel is on the north end of Colorado Springs. The design guidelines I got from Best Western, they had an example of this hotel for upper-mid-scale. So, I'm kind of shooting in the dark and throwing darts at the dartboard here. So, anyhow, I kind of liked this one in Castle Rock. And so, I thought, "Well, I may be try something like that." And so, that's where that drawing came from. And so, when Sally reviewed her staff report with me, "Bill, we think you ought to redesign," you know? So, I said, "That's fine. I haven't thought the thing through yet." And so, that's kind of where we're at. And so, the other thing I wanted to show, I wanted to point out to you on these photographs on this board over here. My market study report identified this Holiday Inn Express downtown Colorado Springs. It's opened about six months ago as a primary competitor that was getting business from people staying in Woodland, staying in Woodland Park. The other one they identified is the Hyatt. And this is off of Garden of God Road, just west of I-25, back of the Black IP. And then, the, another one is the Marriott, or Fairfield Marriott, up where this Best Western is. Now, one thing I wanted to point out, that all of these hotels that identify as primary competitors, they all got four floors of windows. You know, and, and we got on this drawing, four floors of windows, but I got a parking garage underneath it. That's the only difference. Now, the other thing that I wanted to point out is the, I said, "I like this hotel in Castle Rock. Had these stair tires." And, but if you add a parking garage underneath of it, I figured, well, that's about seventy-five feet. And so, that's where my seventy-five foot came from. Now, if I go back and put a flat roof, and a perp, and stuff like that, you know, the, being seventy foot wide on a pitch roof, a five-twelve pitch, man, you can gain a lot of height real quick time you get to the, you know, in the middle of thirty-five feet in from the center of the building. And so, after I showed this drawing to Sally, she said, "Bill, if you do us a couple of perspectives?" And so, that's, that's where those perspectives came from. And, you know, I, and that's the, the first shot out of my pencil swirling around on paper of where we're at. So, I'm all for redesign, okay? So, the other thing I wanted to bring out, I'm going to save the rest of my presentation on economic benefits and all that stuff for when we come back, because I think this is a height issue tonight and a bulk. And I just want to explain how we got here. So, that's kind of the end of all I got to say. Answer any questions?
Is the auto repair shop still down below the Loafen Jug?
The auto repair shop is underneath the Loafen Jug.
Right, is it still here?
And I've talked to Lonnie about, you know, I showed him pictures of this and so on. And so, he didn't have any, I mean, the, we're not utilizing any of the parking that he, he utilizes some of our parking, wasn't he? You know, his customers leave their vehicles overnight or something. And, but we got a good working relationship.
And then, where's Sharon Williams going to go?
Well, I've talked to them about relocation and so on. And the, we're looking at doing a, owning this property right in here. And the, all the parts is right here, right here. And we're looking at doing a freestanding building right there. We got an acre site that hadn't been developed.
So, you'd still have the additional traffic from the Sharon Williams plus the traffic now from the hotel? Is that correct?
I'm a little hard to hear.
Oh, okay. You would have, you would still have the traffic then from Sharon Williams coming through that parking, parking, you know, for the shopping center, plus you'd have the traffic from the hotel? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, I think the traffic from Sharon Williams, if we get them relocated, it's going to be down Lafayette Avenue.
Does the city provide, you know, he's going back and reworked the things, have you given guidelines? Have we set like 35 feet as the maximum, or?
At this time, I did not feel comfortable to give specifics. We want to work with the applicant and see what he comes up with. We did look at some other examples and gave him some examples of other hotels.
Okay.
But, I mean, the guidelines is, we'd like to see more types of materials, rock, timber, and a reduced height, and hopefully a roof line that had maybe more gables, not real thrilled about a flat roof.
Mr. Scanlon?
Just a quick question, Mr. Page. Do you, thank you for your comments, do you think you have flexibility with Best Western?
I think, yeah, there's flexibility, but, you know, I'm, it's, it's what architects do, I mean, they, you know, they work with a program.
Right.
And then you've got one client here, and you've got a municipality here, and you've got to, for sure, buying in Best Western, buying in Best Western, and so.
But they have formats, I presume? I mean, they've labeled this hotel mid-upscale.
Yeah, they gave you all the, a lot of it has to do with...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
With room sizes and the mix of rooms, you know, there's, and different types of handicap rooms. And, and, you know, that's, that's where working with a hotel chain like that is very beneficial, because they got all this information and from all the other hotels they have, they know what works and, you know, what people are, the travelers are looking for.
Thank you.
If all those examples of the hotels, the Best Western hotels and others, are from Colorado Springs, the city, do you have any examples in your book of Best Westerns that are in a mountain town that would, you know, adjust to that expectation?
I don't think they're in that book, but I think there might be some we could find online or something like that. And we just, we're just like getting in to the beginning of the process, you know. And maybe I scheduled my meeting with Sally a month too early, I haven't shown any of this stuff to Best Western.
Let us do this. Let us take about a 10-minute recess, at which time you folks, if you want to come up, as long, I'm assuming Mr. Page is agreeable, to look at these different, you can't see them from back there, just like it's difficult this far away. But let's reconvene this and start the public comment at 8:25. In the meantime, the restaurants are in the rear, and Mr. Page is up here, if you'd like to come up and look at these, these different panels, do so now, okay?